Make sure everybody's turned on to Sherry. Okay, I'll call tonight's meeting to orders, our regular city council meeting for Monday, March 14th, 2022. The agenda's gonna be, well, at least by numbers short, maybe time short, we'll see. Got a couple of items as we get to them, we're gonna, it's like, take a pass on some things are not ready. But anyway, with that, we will take the first item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What we got for public comments? Let's see. So, Ms. Sherry, you are signed up for item number three, which actually is gonna be one of the ones that we were gonna pass tonight because the information's not ready. But maybe your comments ought to be timely, ma'am?
I still like the comments.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it'd be timely even though it's not gonna be handled tonight, so we can take it up next time. But yes. So, that takes us to the consent, I'm sorry, yeah, the consent agenda, which are the minutes under item 1A, consider approving minutes of regular council meeting held on February the 14th, 2022. Those minutes were emailed to us and they are also in front of you this evening. So, I hope everybody's had a chance to look through them. You remember they were dominated by our time in executive session regarding the Canoff Meadow that you see there. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or to make any changes to it? They need minutes of February the 14th, 2022.
We approve the minutes February 14th.
There's a motion second under item 1A. Any other questions or comments? Hearing non-holds in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. That takes us to item number two, and I understand, well, I'll read it off first, to receive the COPSync presentation as requested by Chief James Burson. So Chief, I understand that that's not quite ready tonight. So, even though there's gonna be no action to take there tonight, will you tell us what you anticipated, what that was gonna be about, and then the reason why it's not before us tonight?
Good evening. You know, the COPSync program's a reporting system for our police department, which, you know, it involves our Tyler system, and it's supposed to coincide with it where they got, if they have to make four reports, after the first one's done, it can be relayed over to the second, third, and fourth report without having to individually enter it. It also tracks where the officer is. And Moody and Crawford and some of McLennan County, they're all on this, and they can all respond to each other without going through the radio. They can just pull it up on the computer, and they can see where everyone's located. And we had this set up for six weeks, and a lady calls this morning with our flash drive program, and she said she couldn't make it. So, to me, that kinda put it on the back burner, but that may have opened some other doors to our Tyler system, which they've came out with new programs similar to COPSync, and we're working on that information.
So what kind of information would you have provided to us? Now, I understand it'd be some sort of report, but what would we have seen by that? And what do you anticipate?
See how the system works and how it's integrated in the PD and throughout the county or throughout the state. It shows the, how to correspond with other officers in the area or throughout the state.
They're gonna show you demo because you need to buy something to make it work like it should.
But in the meantime, Tyler, which is our system, we made sure they would integrate with each other. And then Tyler came out and said, hey, we got the same program, so they're gonna show us that, show us what they have to offer.
So how long have we had COPSync?
We haven't had COPSync.
Oh, we haven't?
No, we do not have.
So what do you mean, Kevin, by show something, make it work?
Well, you're basically buying a program that puts it all together. You've already got Tyler Systems, that's your systems now. What it used to be called?
ENCODE. ENCODE, yes.
The old days of ENCODE.
And it ties into the court system also.
This kinda brings everything together, makes your staff time a lot more efficient when they're filling out reports. It does four of them at once, and then those types of things. But it's a monetary consideration. COPSync is probably the most predominant, but now it appears there may be more opportunities. So we'll look at some more and bring it back to you later.
So we'll give both companies in the opportunity to make a presentation to see which one?
Yeah, we'll probably jury it. I mean, I could do that, but I don't know if you wanna do that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll take a look at the best one with the, for the least money with the same capabilities that we're looking at for this reporting system.
What would it be exactly reporting that would be different than the ENCODE or RMS Tyler?
It all interacts together with COPSync, but, you know, Tyler and ENCODE, they've come out with their own similar COPSync, you know, just, they fix it where it can be integrated into all, into the system we already have.
So the COPSync wouldn't be a whole new program? It would just be?
Licensing, licensing, and making sure they, they'll work together.
Okay, so they, ENCODE and COPSync would work together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we wouldn't be getting rid of ENCODE?
No.
Okay.
And I've got a guy that, he's into all that, you know, that system, because he's used it before for several years, and he knows how it works. And I had him working on that system, Officer Holland.
Do we have ticket writers?
Yes.
Is that through Tyler as well, for us?
Yes. And it works through that also.
Okay, so maybe next time, next meeting?
Yes, maybe next meeting.
Okay, that's it. I appreciate it. So item three, if there's no action to take on item two, obviously we'll pass it to the next meeting. Item three, we're gonna pass, it's the resolution R-5-22. But as counsel knows, and for the public, for their understanding, we are gonna be in the process of acquiring some land for the rail spur for Canoff. So the mainline BNSF is gonna have to come across land that's privately owned as it comes across 317 and into the industrial part for Canoff. And so, this resolution was going to be associated with that decision and that process. Kevin told me that's not ready for tonight as well?
The appraiser's not completed yet.
Okay. So we're gonna have to get an appraisal on it and may end up in a condemnation proceeding? Not sure just yet, but appraisal would be the first step on that.
Correct. You gotta have the appraisal before you can take this action, and the appraisal probably won't be here till tomorrow or the next day. And so it should be ready to go on the next council meeting.
So with that, Ms. Shadoon, you've signed up, and you are welcome to speak about it.
Is Canoff, is it or is not, is it not part of the TERS?
Is Canoff a wife's?
Is it part of the TERS?
Yeah, that's the only reason.
It is, yes. So why is the City of McGregor involved in this? The TERS board should be making this decision. So here we are providing land and a spur for a TERS business. Why is this not going through the TERS board? Why is the City of McGregor involved in TERS business? I have, now, I read this, and I thought it was absolutely, I won't, I won't tell you what I thought. Providing railroad loading and unloading access for the citizens of the City of McGregor? Well, I've lived here for 54 years. I've never had to load or unload from a rail car. But I do know some people who have, and where do they load and unload from? The spur by the train station, where the old cop belt line used to come in there. And that's where they load and unload, right there. And the other spur out by, I guess, McGinley Edition, that's a city alley that runs right alongside of it. So, you know, I'm kinda curious. Now we're talking about land, which would have to be the land running parallel to Ferguson. And I think some of that land there was already purchased. So I'm just kind of confused as to why the city is involved in this. And when it's the second part, providing industrial and other access to railroad transportation within the formal naval weapons reserve industrial? That's TERS, folks, is it not? Is it not TERS?
One aspect of many things, yes.
Just, yes or no? Is this, is the?
Well, you're taking it out of context.
Former naval, no, I'm reading it right off of here.
I understand, but the idea about whether it's in the TERS or not is completely taken out of context. It's city, it's a city transaction, it's city property taxes that are coming back.
Why, no, 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 stop a minute. Stop a minute. Is it or is it not part of the TERS?
Well, yes, but that's about one-tenth of the answer, so.
Okay, well, we'll go to the next part then. Does the TERS board, or does it not, handle infrastructure, contracting, and so on and so forth in the TERS region? Does the TERS board, do they or do they not have that responsibility?
No.
They do not?
No, that is not part of everything.
Okay, what is their responsibility then? Because you outlined it to me one time, and that was one of the things, yes.
To oversee the receipt of tax dollars into the TERS, and then the proper distribution of that money that comes out to pay for the improvements that are put into the TERS.
Okay, so you're telling me the city is making decisions in the TERS area, and the TERS board is nothing but a financial in and out?
It's city property, Ms. Shadoon. What do you think it is? It's city land that we're talking about?
Why is the city, why isn't the TERS board, is the TERS board being consulted at all on this?
When necessary, they sure will be.
Is this just not an outlay of money?
Well, yeah, someone's got.
So it's coming out of our general fund, correct?
No, no.
It's not? Where's it coming?
Why do you?
Is it coming from the CO?
That is, it will. It's all contemplated.
Oh, so the city is now determining what comes out of the CO and what doesn't, correct? Without board approval?
When we did the entire development agreement, that still hasn't been signed with Canoff, all of these things were taken into account. We have to put an entire package together of rail, acquiring the land, water, sewer, a road.
Yeah, that's all part of the TERS.
All part of how it's gonna be paid back through a TERS. That's correct.
Okay, so you're telling me the City of McGregor is going to be making all financial decisions for the TERS, for the TERS?
No, that's what I'm telling you, no.
That's what you just said. All they're doing is cash in, cash out.
Sherry, I'm not gonna get in an argument about what I'm saying, what you're saying. You're gonna take my words, you're gonna use them for whatever benefit you want.
No, I want you to just.
I'm just telling you that what you're talking about is a TERS, and what the city does are two separate things.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not all encompassed in one magic TERS. A TERS is set up for one thing, to receive tax dollars and to pay those tax dollars back to pay for the improvements. But it's the city.
So the city is doing all the contracting?
It's the city council that was elected by the people to make the decisions.
So the city council is doing, is doing all of the appraisals, contracting?
Yeah, that development agreement, absolutely.
Okay. So the TERS board's nothing but a cash register, correct?
Those are your words. That's just silliness. Those are yours words. That means nothing.
Well, that's cash in, cash out, right? Kinda like a cash register, I'm sorry.
You can call it whatever you want, I'm not gonna.
Oh, okay. I thought they had some decision-making powers, but.
They do. They do. They approve how the money comes in and how.
Okay, yeah.
How it covers the amortization schedule. That's, they approve those things.
You're just wasting our time up here. You're just literally standing there wasting our time.
We're gonna fight tonight. I'm not.
Ridiculous.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you either. And that was not a very nice thing for you to say. I was not wasting your time.
It could get a lot worse. I'm holding my tongue.
Well, that really wasn't very nice either.
And we're just arguing about nothing, Sherry. I understand the point you wanna make.
But acquiring property for the citizens of McGregor to load and unload, that's really not necessary. It's already out there.
It's part of, that's part of legal language. It needs to be in there because there will be people that may be on that terrain as they are unloading equipment. I mean, someone's gotta bring it in there. There'll be, yeah, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be Amtrak.
I'm aware of that. It's coming in on a freight train. I'm aware of that. I know freight comes in on freight trains, Jimmy. I know that.
I realize. You're just picking apart a few words.
Okay, no, no, thank you. No, I just wanted clarification on where the city is involved in all this. And you answered that question. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Item four is discussion of possible action regarding the approval of resolution R-6-2022. It's a resolution of the city council of the City of McGregor authorizing professional service providers, selection for American Rescue Plan Act. The ARP Act, no relation to Terry ARP, I would say.
I think he may have thought that. That's why he showed up. This is a situation where we got notified a year ago, maybe, I don't know if it's been that long or not, that this was available. We had to dot some i's and cross some t's to be, stay qualified for it. It's significant money. We got the money in the bank. We're beginning to look at the process of how to spend it on what. It's fairly limited. However, I read two or three articles from different cities who decided to turn the money back, and that raised some red flags to me. We began taking a look at why. I've made a few phone calls. It all seemed to come down to what we used to call the statement of assurances. I'm not sure what that's called now or what it's, it is in dealing with this, but it's what you sign on the dotted line and say you're gonna do with things that aren't always having to do with a grant. We shopped around, found out that some neighboring cities had hired a firm to take a look at that. We went out RFPs, and that same firm came in as a result of those RFPs, and here we are. So, if you wanna keep this money, we're gonna have to decide how to spend it over the course of the next couple of months, probably, and then move forward.
So maybe, Kevin, this is maybe a question for Caroline, but I'm assuming we know specifically how much we're talking about?
The grant? Yes, sir.
How much is the first, how much we have in the bank now?
Six hundred and sixty thousand.
So is, has that money already been received?
Yes.
And the question is, because I know we share this concern, I think, last time, some cities have turned it back.
Yep.
Because there were strings attached to it that maybe people just didn't understand?
That's what I'm thinking, and that's why we've got a professional here to help us tonight. I think, and it may be calling Renee out, but I think the City of Beverly Hills has done it, haven't they not?
And we've done it through Grant Works.
And that's, really Renee's one of the cities that I talked to to find out kinda what they did and why. And Carolyn and her have been talking, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
Well, and one of the things is, this is federal, so you have to follow so many more rules or get into trouble. And that's when I went to Kevin and said, I'm not comfortable. I need somebody who does this every day, all day long, to make sure all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So that's when I reached out and talked with Mr. Payne, who's here. Keith will be happy to answer any questions y'all might have as well. We did send out eight RFPs, and this was the one that we got back, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward to hearing what to do with it and if we wanna keep it or not.
Okay. I think that's one of the first meetings after tonight, once they're hired, that Kevin has asked to sit down with them and just make sure all of the ideas that we've, are doable.
So, and at this point, we're not so far into this that if we find out this is not good for the city, that we could return it if we wanted?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
But the process will be, and sir, maybe you can help answer this, at the end of the process, we will know exactly what it is that we can spend the money on and whether it, and whether we have to repay it?
Only if we don't bawl our i's and cross our t's. Then we do. That's what scared me, to be honest, because it's.
And that's why he's here.
It's payable in full at one time.
Go ahead.
My name's Keith Payne. I'm with Grant Works. Up until about a month ago, we were working off the Treasury's issued interim final report, which seems like an oxymoron to me. But those were the guidelines that we were using, and they had spelled out the eligible activities that cities could use their allocation for. About a month ago, the Treasury issued their final report. In that final report, they have broadened the net for eligible activities, and it's stated in the final report that they've made the documentation easier. I'm told by our American Rescue Plan team that the easing of filing documentation and data is eased minimally. And so, many cities and counties have hired Grant Works to navigate the American Rescue Plan eligible activities. These funds have to be allocated by 12/31/2024, excuse me, have, the funds have to be obligated to a project by 12/31/2024, and the money has to be spent by 12/31/2026. And so, Grant Works would be able to provide total management services in terms of document, setting up processes for documenting and data recovery, helping with your reports, management of the project itself. And so, we would be following and making recommendations to the city to be, ensure that we're following the guidelines of the Treasury for eligible activities.
So backing up even before that, this is money, then, that is coming to cities based upon, I guess, population? Is that?
Yes.
And then, it's, is it the government form of the COVID Relief Act that private enterprises were offered?
Yeah, it's the American Rescue Plan Act. It was passed in March of last year. The counties receive their funds directly from the US Treasury. The non-entitlement cities receive their funds through the Treasury, but it comes through the Texas Department of Emergency Management, or TEEDM.
And why were some cities turning it back, then, or considering turning the money back?
I don't, I don't, I couldn't address that. It'd be just what I've heard and rumored, and you don't wanna make a decision based on that.
And how will you get paid by the city? Percentage?
It is a percentage. It's in the proposal, and I think the fee percentage was less than 5.2%, I think.
That's correct.
And so you'll not only advise us on the front end, but you'll be responsible with the paperwork throughout?
Yes. The mayor of the city will actually be responsible for uploading, since the city received the funds. The city will be responsible for uploading the report, but Grant Works, should we be hired, will be helping you prepare those reports and help make sure that they get properly uploaded to the Treasury.
And we have the money right now, Carolyn?
The money was, is going to be deposited in two tranches. So about half of it, the county is, excuse me, the city's already received. And originally, it was stated that a year from when you receive your first funds, you would receive the second tranche of funds, which is sometime in the, I would assume in the next several months. And just know that it is an eligible activity that the grant administrator, should you choose to hire one, can be paid out of these funds.
Yeah, what, what kind of projects are you talking about that the money can be used?
Well, originally, there were four eligible activities under the interim final rule, and that was, they could, you could be used, they could be used for premium pay for employees. They could be used for businesses, nonprofits in the, in the area. And it's been a long time.
Infrastructure.
What's it? Well, the, there's four eligible activities. I'll pull my brochure out. The first three have to be tied directly back to COVID, and the fourth eligible activity was infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband. And that doesn't have to have a tieback back to COVID.
And loss of revenue.
Yeah, loss of revenue is a third area that needs to be tied back directly to COVID.
My first thought on loss of revenue was the C3 facility being shut down. We're gonna have about a year of revenue loss to the general fund. Uh, we might can go back and do that 3% for the line employees that we missed last year. But those are things that you need to think through. We've got some ideas. The other one that comes to my mind immediately is water lines. We've got plenty of water lines that need to be rebuilt. Um, in fact, I was having a conversation with the street department and the water department last week late, and, uh, most of the streets we need to go fix now also have water line work that needs to be done. So there's some opportunities there, but that's by no way the, the total limit, and that's, I would anticipate our next meeting, maybe a special meeting, just to come, to talk about this with him, and, uh, let you get as much information as possible.
Yeah, Mayor, and Council, uh, from our perspective, um, should the Council, um, make a recommendation to go forward and, and, uh, hire Grant Works for your administrative services, the, the next step for us would be to have a project meeting, to meet with the city manager and whoever else needs to be in that meeting, just to talk about projects. And, um, to draw up that project list so that we can move forward, make sure that they're all eligible, eligible activities, so that, um, the last thing that the city wants, we, the last thing cities and county wants is for this to be a five-year project for completion, and then years after that, have something come back, um, because it might not have been an eligible activity. So, a, a lot of cities and a lot of clients have hired administrators to have a second pair of eyes looking at those projects and making sure that they're in compliance with the, uh, guidance that the Treasury's put out.
Who ultimately audits?
I'm sorry?
Who ultimately serves as the auditor of where, of the money coming in and going out? Is it the Federal Treasury, or who is that?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, if someone gave us some money?
Right.
And then someone's gotta make sure that our projects comply with the list, who actually makes that decision? That's what I'm thinking, I was gonna talk about.
Well, the Tre-
The money coming in is spent properly, is money going out?
That was one of the things that one of the cities I talked to that rejected it had is because in the paperwork, the original paperwork, it stated that the feds can't come in and, and audit your books to see what you did, and they were not comfortable with, with that.
And I believe then, at that point, if it wasn't an ineligible, um-
You had to pay it.
-item, the city would have to pay that off.
You got that money back in full at one time.
Is there a way to know that on the front end, though, to get approval of that project so you don't end up in that situation?
I believe that's what Grant Works.
Well, from our, from our point of view, we've read, we've been, worked, looking at the American Rescue Plan Act since day one, and we are not going to recommend a project that is not in compliance with the guidance for the Treasury. And, um, we've had cities that have wanted to do projects that weren't, uh, we didn't feel like they were eligible activities, and we just stated such. We can't tell you not to do a project if the city decides to do a project, but we can give you our best guidance that we feel like this project is not an eligible activity, even though with the final ruling, they have widened the net for eligible activities.
Would our auditor also, our regular auditor also be doing the books?
Oh, they'll be looking at it.
Is it a single audit act?
Yeah, but I can just see a big problem there. You spend a bunch of money on something that's not covered, and then all of a sudden, money's no good. You gotta get the money back because you're blowing your timeline, and then the city has to pay the money back, so that would be improper.
You would, you would expect me to say this, Mayor, but that's why you need a grant administrator.
And that's what I was gonna say. I mean, I, I would say yes, just for the purpose of them being that extra set of eyes and that expertise for the city to make sure that we are covered, so we don't end up having to pay something back.
Okay, and so, we're talking about $600,000?
Right now, six hundred and sixty.
Well, the tot-
That's the first payment.
The total allocation is 1.32 million.
And we're talking about 5% of that?
Less than 5.2%.
Somebody do the math on that. How much money?
Sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah, 'cause I did.
I got it right here.
Yeah, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight thousand, $600.
Over how many years?
Five years. Well, the, the funds have to be expended by 12/31/2026.
And you would then be paid out of that money received?
We would typically set up a payment schedule based on percentage of completion.
But, but again, be paid out of the fund?
You'd be paid out of the allocation of funds, correct.
So that is a proper expenditure of the money, then?
Yes.
Is that a one-time fee, or it's like he said, or is it every year?
No, that's a lump sum fee, but the, your payment schedule, should you decide to hire us, would be based on percentage of completion.
Okay.
For whatever projects the city decides to embark on.
In other words, as we pay the money out, we pay you 5.2%?
Yeah.
Or so.
We would, we would negotiate a payment schedule based on the percentage of completion, so you would have input in how that payment schedule works.
I'm okay with it. I just wanna know, Kevin, when you meet with them, I, I think the Council needs to have input of what those potential projects are.
Well, you're gonna approve the projects before anything else, but I wouldn't mind having a couple of y'all on our group that meets with them.
Yeah, I agree. And then it can come back to Council for approval?
I know we just approved the listing, or the Council did, so everything would come before Council.
Yeah. Okay, so before us tonight is, um, just to approve a resolution that is included, uh, it looks like in the form of this contract. So we got the resolution that it authorizes the hiring subject to the scope of work that's in the packet. Well, is there a motion on, um, Resolution R-6-2022? And if there's further discussion, we can sure talk about it. Anybody? Is it the resolution there, Mr. Harrison?
Sorry about that.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution R-6-2022. There's a motion, it's second under item four. What are the questions or comments does the Council have? So Kevin, yeah, I think your idea is a good one, to put a couple of people on there. You might just need to do that informally. It's not a, uh, it's not on the agenda to take some formal action, but... Do you know what your timetable will be, sir, Keith? If you're hired, when, uh, you'd wanna meet with folks at the city?
As soon as practical for the city.
What would you think, Kevin?
Put somebody on. We can talk about it later, it's not a big deal. Uh, the, the thing is, there's not gonna be too many meetings before you get kicked off. I think there's some pretty solid cases to make for a whole lot of things in this community, so, uh, so maybe have some thought and some time on it, be good.
So Carolyn, when, you know, when you sent this out, how long was it out for? You know? When you, when you-
It was ten days? The RFP? How to go pretend it, we had to follow the, uh, the feds, there's the timeline, what all had to, even as far as what had to be said, how long it had to be in the newspaper. They sent me the, the, where I just had to plug in our information.
So what I'm saying, it is not a possibility of anybody else, just, this is the one that was-
Oh, I sent them to all over Texas. I mean, South Texas, Central Texas, North Texas.
Now, what I'm saying, but it's not an opportunity for nobody else coming up, so the time, the timeline for this, that's for that.
Yes, yes, sir, you are correct.
Weren't they the only bit that we received?
Yes, they were.
Yeah.
But I kinda reached several, just trying to get a big, 'cause there wasn't anything in Waco, you know, they're trying to get everything around us. And they were sent the packet, the entire packet, so all they had to do was respond.
Okay, uh, there's still a motion and a second before us. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Okay, looks like you're hired.
Thank you, Council. Mayor, for your confidence, and we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, we do, too. Look forward to getting something good out of this. All right, that takes us to item five, which is discussion of possible action regarding nominations for C1 and 2 on the McLennan County 911 Emergency Assistance District Board. So you can see in the letter that, uh, we got from, looks like Mr. Harrison, the Executive Director of the McLennan County 911, there are two folks that are up, Brett Cook and James Devlin. Do we know anything about these folks? Anybody? Chief, you had any interaction with them?
Yes, sir, I have. Both of them have signed up to be the chiefs.
Okay.
Several years ago.
Well, that's the endorsement I was looking for, then. Does anybody else have a recommendation or thought on this? Well, if you've worked with them and think that highly of them, as does the Director of the 911 himself, who asked that we reappoint, is there a motion to appoint Brett Cook and James Devlin?
I make a motion that we appoint Brett Cook and James Devlin back to the 911.
Circle. Thank you. There's a motion, a second under item five regarding, uh, 911 appointments. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item six is to receive the financials as of January 31st, 2022.
Mayor, Council, January represents one-third of our fiscal year. Our general fund revenues are at 49.26% of, um, budgeted, and our expenditures are at 21. Uh, the utility fund is at 32.08, just barely under the third, and our, their expenses are at 23.46. Uh, the exchange event center's at 28.17, and expenses are at 31.3, and the airport is at 40.5 and 10.72. Kathy, can you change that? I can't get this to change it. Thank you. The, um, cash is at 2.9 million above where it was last year. I'm gonna go to the next one. I can explain it. Okay, then, you see net cash in bank, as I said, is 2.9 higher than the same period. Uh, operating accounts are up 4,000, debt service accounts are up 300,000, and grant funds, which we just discussed, are at 660, and capital projects accounts decreased 1 million. Uh, our general fund net cash flow is 578.4 higher than the previous year. Revenue is up 414, and expenditures are down 164. The revenue increase is mainly due to sale of assets of 59,300, and our ad valorem taxes collected at 377,000 more than the same period last year.
Do you know why that is? I mean, that, that don't, that didn't seem like it put on that much new property that it would've gone up that much. Is that a timing issue?
I think so. A lot of that is timing, I do. 'Cause we're, we've gotten some bigger deposits that, I mean, you know, than normal. Usually they're coming in about now. We've got them, even in February, we got a couple more so. Uh, the decrease in expenditures mainly due to a reduction in personnel costs and our capital outlay delays. We have stuff on order, but it's taking longer to get it in, so therefore it hasn't been paid for yet, so that's part of the, why we're not equal to what we were last year in capital outlay. Uh, our utility fund net cash is up 41,000, revenues are down 35, and expenses are down 76.5. Our municipal airport net cash flows are up 40,000, uh, revenues are up 36.9, and expenses are down 3.1. Our next one is our sales tax, and as you'll see, we're at 447,000, uh, year-to-year, January each year, uh, which is the highest by quite a bit now of any previous year.
You have a question about the financial report? Okay, thanks, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Kevin, one of the issues that I saw there was personnel, reduction in personnel. What departments can you think of off the top of your head that were short of, short in personnel right now?
Uh, we were short for a while. We were short for a while at PD. I don't think we are. Are we still one down in PD? James?
Well, not, not if you count the school register.
Okay, so we're not one down in PD now, but we were, uh, down for a little while. Uh, street departments had a hard time keeping folks on board. Uh, I think they're caught up. Parks is caught up?
They are caught up.
So it's just been a up and down.
Olson's position is still open.
Oh, yeah, Olson's position, the planter position essentially is still open.
Any luck trying to find somebody?
Uh, yeah, we're, we've, we've been trying to work with the job description, and we're just now settled on where to go. We're about to post it.
I just got a feeling that's gonna be a tough spot to fill.
It's gonna be a very tough spot to fill. We're very fortunate that we have Barry to back us up with the small stuff and the firm that he represents, that Mike represents, doing all the big stuff on, on construction, but the planter spot, the nature of that case is gonna change real quick. And we're gonna be looking forward to it.
Kevin, do we have closed meeting stuff to talk about tonight?
Yes, sir, all we can, we don't-
All right, so it's 6:09, no, 7:20.
Sorry.
Uh, so under item seven is a closed meeting pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the section 551-071, um, 072 Real Estate and, uh, 551.087 Economic Development. Under item, uh, looks like probably B and D specifically, uh, will be the Real Estate and Economic Development. Under D is discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial financial information received from business prospects seeking to locate, stay, or expand in or near the city from McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So at this time, at 7:20, we'll go into executive session and return shortly to taking the action necessary. At this time, we are, uh, a journey from open session. At this time, we are a journey from open session.
8:00, someone with this clock.
Somebody with more technical expertise than I, which doesn't take much.
It's 8:03, so we're back into open session under item A. Put some announcements for the city manager.
Housing. The parks is moving forward. The larger lot subdivision on the north side is moving forward. George Eggers is about done with what we used to call the unfinished subdivision. He has some more property he's bought on the south side. And I was told today that another 90-acre piece of property is being looked at for development, and I think it's for housing. So just wanted to make sure that that was publicly addressed. And that's all I have, sir. Other than the fact that I'm going to be out of town Wednesday and Thursday going to my daughter's powerlifting meet, state powerlifting meet in Corpus Christi. Thank you. You're welcome, Carly.
All right, item nine, announcements from council. Questions, comments?
Quick question. Does the city handle the library, or are they separate?
They're separate. We give building and money. If you have a comment, if you'll give me the comment, I can get it to a person who's on the board who deals with it.
Okay. I can get with you after the meeting.
Mayor, I need to back up. My apologies. You had asked last meeting, we talked about Beulah Park.
Yeah.
Beulah Park, first of all, has not, I don't know how to say this, it's not, never had something done. We actually put a new unit park down, playground down there. It was the second one we did after we did casting. Well, there's still a lot of problems. The tennis courts, I have, we talked to Gary Graham about them a long time ago. He ran some numbers. Basically, the stuff that's there, just almost impossible to recover and use. He's gone. Paul Kilpatrick, who handled that, is gone.
Gary's gone? He retired?
Oh yeah, he's been retired. Now, we can't seem to get rid of him on some projects, but he's technically retired on that project. He's certainly retired. He still helps us on CCNN issues. So I talked to Jacob Henson, who's our rep at Walker Partners. Got the name of the folks that do the tennis courts for the school from James Lineman. He followed up with them. Jacob followed up with them, showed him pictures that Jacob's been out and took. And basically, he agreed with Gary Graham's assessment, going to have to at least mill it down. Has a contracting company that's going to come take a look at it and give us some more advice. So we're trying to move forward to that, to do that in a way that might work. With our asphalt expertise at this point, we may actually be able to go in there and mill that thing down and relay it, and then have a contractor come over and put the surface on it. But we're going to be investigating that as well.
Just want to make sure that we use that space as wisely as possible in multi-quarter, just, you know, like basketball, tennis, pickleball.
I think tennis, I think tennis and pickleball in particular. Basketball court, might want to build a basketball tee at the side, just so they could be going on at the same time.
Yeah, right, exactly. That's what I mean.
They don't, they don't get along real well.
No, that's what I mean. Spaced out properly, so you could do all those things.
Probably going to be doing some new benches down there. FFA had a cookout down there that I went to, and I'm like, "Yeah, this is getting a little rough."
Yeah.
But we'll be looking at it, and there'll be a meeting coming up soon, Cassie, on the splash pad. We've got numbers on that. We've got stuff on that. They've had one meeting with the consultant and the engineer, and so that'll be another meeting coming forward. I think they're about ready to have another meeting on that. That's it.
All good information. Anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. 8:07.